Good evening, everyone. We'll bring tonight's city council meeting. Is there a motion on tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. Under the consent agenda, I'd like to add item J, sub.
I'll second.
Your motion is made in second. There's any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Nelson, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ranning.
Aye.
Councilmember Placens.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. That motion passes. Onto presentations. A public hearing for off sale liquor license application at thirty-two fifty-five Viking Boulevard, northeast.
Staff is recommending that council conduct a public hearing regarding an off sale liquor license for Viking Arco Sea Store Incorporated as required by the East Bethel City Code, Article Three, intoxicating liquor, Section six dash fifty-five. For notification requirements, the public hearing for this date was published in the Anoka County Union. At the conclusion and close of the public hearing, council will consider the approval of an off sale liquor license for Viking Arco Sea Store, Inc., doing business as Viking Arco Sea Store, located at thirty-two fifty-five Viking Boulevard, Northeast. The applicant is the new owner of the property which previously held identical license. All application materials, completed background checks and fees have been submitted for the off sale liquor license. Final approval of the liquor license would be contingent on approval of the State Commissioner of Public Safety. Approval as counsel is required prior to the action by the state. Staff recommends conducting the public hearing to receive comments on the off sale liquor license for Arco Sea Store, Inc., doing businesses Viking Arco Sea Store. Once the public hearing is closed and there are no reasons to deny the license, staff recommends council consider approval of an on off sale liquor license from Viking Arco Sea Store, located at thirty-two fifty-five Viking Boulevard, Northeast, East Bethel, Minnesota, five-five-zero-nine-two. At this point, staff.
With that, we'll open the public for liquor license. Jack, did we receive any interest on this?
There were no comments, letters, or postcards or anything indicating anybody had a desire to speak on that tonight.
Well, seeing we have no public comment, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions or motion on this?
I have a question.
Suzanne?
Has anybody researched the company that took over this place to make sure they're like ethical? Is that anything that we ever do? To make sure a company, because I'm understanding what I looked into is, as I could find out, is they're from Chicago.
We do a background check on the owners as required by the ordinance, and that's essentially the limits of our extent on that. So the background checks came back okay.
Oh, that's wonderful. Okay. What happens if they don't come back okay? Then are they denied?
If they don't come back okay, we would not even bring this up, or if it was brought up, we would recommend it wouldn't be approved.
Thank you.
Move for approval of the off sale liquor license for Viking Arco Sea Store Incorporated at thirty-two fifty-five Viking Boulevard, East Bethel, Minnesota.
Check it.
Motion made in second. Discussion. Hearing none. Mr. Nelson, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ranning.
Aye.
Councilmember Placens.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. And that passes. On item D, Anoka County Sheriff's Office report.
Okay. Hey.
What do you think?
The sheriff's report, I'm sorry, good evening. Sheriff's report for August twenty-twenty, custodial of DWI, there were six DWI arrests in August. Two of the arrests were the result of traffic stops for driving conduct. Two arrests stemmed from single vehicle crashes where the driver failed field sobriety tests and failed a breathalyzer test. One arrest was the result of a drunken driver being called in. The final arrest involved a male who was passed out in the grass by a business at P M. Upon Deputy Aldering making contact with the male, he admitted he was sleeping it off and had driven to the location. The male did take a breath test, which showed a point one-six blood alcohol content. Possessed fifth degree controlled substance, possessed stolen check, false info to police officer, and driving after revocation. Deputy Arco stopped on a vehicle for a traffic violation. Deputy Barrett had recognized the vehicle as having been reported to be suspicious from an incident a week prior. Deputy Barrett recognized the driver as a male who had numerous felony warrants for his arrest. The male gave the name and date of birth of another male to Deputy Arkan to identify himself. The male was taken into custody at which point an inventory search was done on the vehicle. Located in the vehicle were several hypodermic needles containing a liquid substance, one of which field tested positive for methamphetamine. There was a check from a business made out to a male. Deputy Barrett contacted the business to learn the routing and account numbers were correct, however, the check was fraudulent. The suspect was transported to jail. Possessed fifth degree controlled substance. Deputy Lynch was delivering heroin to another male in the Village Green Trailer Park. Upon arrival, Deputy Lynch saw the vehicle which had been mentioned as being involved. There were four occupants of the vehicle. The suspect was in the backseat of the vehicle. Was in the backseat of. Deputies had each occupant step out of the vehicle for questioning. When the suspect got out of the backseat, there was a small baggie containing white crystals left in his spot. There was also a small baggie of marijuana and a baggie containing crushed up pills on the floor in front of his seat. Deputy Lynch opened up the pizza boxes and found several hypodermic needles hidden under the pizza. One of the needles was located with a clear fluid. The male suspect was transported to jail. Once arriving at jail, he became very tired and incoherent. An ambulance was ordered emergency to the jail as the belief is that the male suspect was overdosing. The male became unresponsive and was given two doses of Narcan. The male was transported to Mercy for treatment. The white crystals tested positive for methamphetamine. The crushed pills were identified as Alprazolam. Trespass interoccupied dwelling. Complaint, a complainant called to report an unknown male had been standing in his bedroom. The suspect left the house after the male yelled at him to get out. Deputies arrived and located the male suspect who appeared to be having a mental health issue or was under the influence of some sort of narcotic. The suspect refused to identify himself and said he had been at Danny's but was not able to give any further information about where that was. The male suspect refused to get into the back of the squad car and was exhibiting signs of excited delirium. So an ambulance was called to respond emergency to the scene. The suspect attempted to fight with the deputies and paramedics as they attempted to place him in soft restraints and take him in for an evaluation. Paramedics were able to give the suspect a shot to calm him down, at which time they were able to restrain him. The male was transported to Mercy and issued a citation for trespass. Wedding melee. Deputies were called to the Coon Lake Community Center on fifteen people fighting outside. Upon driving, there was not anyone fighting but many people leaving. Deputy Mo Broughton met with a female who stated she was having her wedding reception and an unknown female had thrown a beer at her and punched her. Deputies were then advised that there was a caller waiting outside to speak with them. The caller reported his wife had become upset as she believed parents were allowing their underage children to drink and she probably started a fight. The male reported he had gotten into the middle of the fight and taken his wife outside. The bride does know the female as the female is sister of the groom. All persons appeared to be intoxicated and no one wanted to pursue any charges in the end. And then lastly, Mayor Voss had asked that I talk about the attempted luring or kidnapping incident which occurred on Saturday night. We received a report approximately six-thirty P M. That a white van with rust on the bottom of the van had stopped and a male in the van had spoken to a young child who was riding her bike home. The male said hello to her, she said hello back, and then he asked her if she wanted to get in the van and she said no. And she continued home. She said that the van did follow her for a short time period before it left the area. Once she got home, she told her parents about the incident. And her dad immediately went out and went through the area trying to locate the van. This occurred in the two-one-six-hundred block of Taylor Street, Northeast. And I know that that evening we had deputies going out to the area to see if people might have any video that we might be able to get a better description of the vehicle that was, that was the suspect vehicle. My understanding through speaking with Mayor Voss is that there was some video that was turned over to our office, but I have not heard any follow up at this time. The male was just described as a male, but I guess the van would be the white van with rust on the bottom, that would be the descriptor. And that happened at approximately six-ten on Saturday evening. So if anyone out there does have any type of video or any type of information, please do call nine-one-one and we will definitely work on collecting that from you.
Hey, this is council for Shelley time. All right. Well, Shelley pretty much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Okay, on to Chief Descharnes with the East Bethel Fire Department monthly report.
Good evening, council. So tonight I'll give you the report on August of this year. In August, we ran on seventy-six calls, which is a near record amount. Out of the six call, seventy-six calls, six of those were vehicle accidents, five were alarms. We had fifty-five medical calls, four burning calls, and a couple minor miscellaneous calls, as we would call it. We had one reported fire in East Bethel that ended up being a minor fire of an adult building. And we did have a storm come through that knocked down a few power lines. Happy to report that our burning calls have gone way down. And of course, as always, we're, you know, I try to remind the residents that a recreational fire is three feet wide, three feet high. And be careful what you burn in it, can't be yard waste. And it always helps to talk to your neighbor before you have the fire in case they want to close their windows if there's smoke. We did assist the state fire marshal for a couple weeks in helping get the schools' final safety inspections done and get those elementary schools open. As you may or may not know, there's a major renovation that was done to East Bethel Elementary School. And a ton, just a ton of fire safety devices and repairs were made. Any questions?
Any questions for chief tonight?
Hi, D. You have mentioned that there has been an increase in smoke alarms. Is that just due to the fact that it's getting colder, people are turning on their, you know, furnaces and maybe space heaters? Or did you, is that not necessarily indicative of what's going on? Or do you have any type of, you know, thing that's, that's been behind the extra smoke alarms? Thanks.
Just kind of the time of year, counselor. Mixed in with those were also a couple CO alarms when the air gets heavy. We tend to have a few more CO alarms. But there was nothing life threatening and anything. Of course, when a smoke alarm goes off and you're not sure what it is, just call nine-one-one and we'll, we'll assist you in trying to track it down. A lot of people don't understand that even though they know that their smoke alarms are hardwired, they're also battery backup. So of course, kind of the old rule of thumb in the fire service is every fall at daylight savings time, when we leave daylight savings time and go into standard time, check your batteries. Don't even check them, just replace them, the nine volt batteries. And the same thing in the spring when we go from standard time to daylight savings time, check the batteries again. So, and that's some of it. And smoke alarms only last seven, seven years, ten years at the maximum. Same thing with CO alarms. You gotta be careful with those, and most of them actually have a date on them if you look on the device, and it'll tell you when they were manufactured. So if you have any over seven years, definitely over ten years, it's time to replace them.
Okay. Suzanne?
Hi, I just want to thank the fire department and the police department for everything that they do. I am so appreciative of all, everything you guys have done. And the list of calls and the people you guys have helped this last, these last months is just amazing. So thank you.
Thank you, council. And I'll pass that on definitely to my crew, and I'm sure Shelley will pass it on to, to her people.
Any other questions for chief? All right. Thanks, Mark.
Thanks. You have a good evening.
You too. On to item D.
Item D is listed in your agenda as a public hearing for a city code amendment for Chapter Ten, Article Five, farm animals. This is listed incorrectly. A public hearing is not required for an ordinance amendment. There only has to be a public notice running the paper, so this is not a public hearing. In addition, there's some clarifications that need to be made on some of the red line changes that are indicated in your packet, and we would like to present this in a more tabular form to make it easier to understand. And at this time, I would just like to open this up for any discussion that council may have. And at the end of this, we would like to take any recommendations you have based on what's presented here and table or continue this to the next meeting.
So if our staff has recommended we table this, before we take a motion to the table, is there anything that's in what was presented tonight that council would like to discuss with staff, or any concerns, suggestions? Suzanne?
There's some things that I'm suggesting, and there are some contradictory things I saw in there that I want to bring up. And this isn't just in four, this is also in the, we're also talking about the whole ordinance, right? Or am I wrong?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I think for roosters, it should be two or more acres. And I, I think that's the only, if you have ten or more acres, I don't even think you need an I U P. I just think people choose to, wherever people choose to live, there's going to be issues. There's going to be roosters, cows, snowmobiles, dirt bikes, tractors in the country. In the city, you get to have the trains, the police sirens, the traffic, the loud trucks, the music blasting, the bars, all that kind of stuff. That was my comment on there, but on the, I gotta find where I wrote those notes. On, on page seventeen, it says, on item C, it says less than three acres, but on page nineteen, on number N, I think it said like a half acre or something. So I think those two are contradicting me. And then G says something about one fenced acre of pasture land, but you don't even need a whole acre in the other paragraph. So that, that was kind of confusing to me. And on page twenty-six, it seems like you're deleting number two and you're, I thought this new ordinance or these new things were supposed to be relaxing the restrictions. However, it appears to be that it's increasing restrictions. And because the wording just allows just about anything in item two on page twenty-six. And then on the other page, it's like almost all gone, there's just one little bullet point. So that's my comments.
And those are some of the things that we wish to address and have some clarification points on those. And with your direction, we can make those changes and address those issues and have them presented at the next meeting.
Well, I think it's probably worthy to discuss right now the two acre versus three acre. This is written as three acres now. Oppose ordinance, and Suzanne has suggested to split on the two acres. Jack, was there reasoning for selection of three acres?
For the keeping of roosters?
Yes.
Yes, is, is, in the write-up, our number one farm animal complaint is roosters. Since August the first, we've had twenty-six complaints about roosters. They've come from four properties. The staff's working with all these to try to get that rectified. The three acres is something that generally keeps this out of platted subdivisions. Most platted subdivisions don't have lots bigger than three acres. Some do, but that was the basic thought on that. Anything over three acres also gives a little bit of extra room too for roosters and a little bit more separation between homes.
So these four properties that have been complaining about in August, what's the size of those properties?
I would have to go back and see. I don't have that information at hand. I can check that and have that to you. I can update you in an email on that.
Okay. I think, I think it'd be worthwhile to have that discussion when we consider this again from the aspect of the two to three acres. If all these complaints were on two acre lots, I mean, there's, like that says a little bit, but but it's a good point, man, is that most of our recently developed residential areas are two acre lots. And so the intent would be to keep the roosters out of these developments. Well, that's certainly something we can discuss at next meeting.
That, that's correct. And this is designed to relax some of the standards on this. One of the major changes would be the allowance of keeping hens on lots of less than a half acre. Currently, they're prohibited on less than a half acre. And then for lots between a half acre and three acres to allow the maximum number provided they meet the fencing and the coop requirement. So, but it would prevent roosters as presented.
So, one of my concerns when you're talking about two or three acres is, I mean, we're just defining how many acres that, that you require in order to have a rooster. But I'm wondering if, I mean, you know, if I had three acres or even ten acres, it really depends upon where I put the coop for that rooster. I mean, if I'm putting it within fifty feet of my neighbor's house and I've got ten acres, that doesn't really do any good for kind of, I think, the intent of having the larger acreage, which is putting those animals further away from residences. And so I'm wondering if, you know, if you're going to have a rooster, whether there needs to be, you know, a distance from another home that is going to make it less of an issue. I mean, similar to like when, you know, somebody's shooting a gun. Now, I realize it's not quite the same, but you have to be so many yards away from your neighbor in order to do that. My other concern is, you know, I would prefer that, that, you know, if you're going to have a rooster, that you should, you should have to get permission from your neighbors, especially if it is two to three acres, to be able to have a rooster. I mean, I think it's less of a concern whether, you know, city council, you know, approves it or not. I mean, to me, I think it's, it would be more beneficial if, if, you know, it was required that if you were within so many, you know, feet, yards, or acreage of where this rooster is going to be, then you would need to get the permission from, from your neighbors. As for actual, you know, the actual verbiage that's, that's on here on page twenty-six, which was already referenced by Councilman, Councilman Urkel, is you are placing here in section ten, one fifty-one, subsection H, where it says one rooster or pheasant slash quail, which is point oh one animal units per acre. And I'm wondering why it shouldn't say one chicken slash rooster or comma rooster, because it should be either or. I mean, you're striking out chicken, right? Then, then that's no longer part of the ordinance. Would that not be correct, or am I mistaken?
I think, Randy, on that, that's one reason we had the definition of hen and rooster instead of just using the word chicken, is that if you meet the requirements, then you can have up to that one oh one animal unit per acre for hens. You can't have that for rooster. That's a clarification that needs to be made in that table.
Okay. I'm still kind of confused by that, but, but we can wait until this comes back. I don't have any other comments other than that at this time. Thanks.
Tom?
Yeah, just food for thought. If the city sets the limits and restrictions, it's pretty well defeated if we give that authority to the, to the neighbors. You're having a hard time hearing me. You know what I mean?
You're kind of cutting out.
Yeah. If, if city sets the regulations and ordinances for these things to happen, it's the city's responsibility to enforce and police whatever, rather than relinquishing that to the neighbor. But the neighbors don't get along, that interferes more than anything. That's, that's it. That's you.
Any other comments to Jack? Was your table?
I'll make a motion to table the current changes to the ordinance for the keeping of farm animals or chickens in specific.
Motion is made in.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ranning.
Aye.
Councilmember Placens.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. That motion passes. Onto our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda.
For a second?
I'd like to.
For a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Suzanne, second. Discussion. Go ahead.
Can I pull item C and G, please?
And G. All right. Any discussion? Gone to the motion, Mr. Nelson, you take roll call vote.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Placence.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Mayor Boss.
Aye, that motion passes. Uh, Suzanne, item C.
Item C, I just have some questions on how, um, this works where the city does the counting of the ballots. And I mean, what is the exact process?
The, the city does not count the ballots. The election results are furnished to the city. Uh, the ballot count is done al- always by the county. Uh, once they do that, they submit this to the city and the city certifies the county count as the official ballot count.
So the city doesn't count, count the absentee ballots?
No, not at all.
Oh, okay. So I guess my next comment is, I understand that there's a lawsuit pending as far as the, um, ruling of delaying the mail-in ballots by so many days. And it's been ruled unconstitutional in several other states. So I think I'd like to make a motion to table this until like next month to see if this lawsuit goes through and they do, um, stop the delay of the, the extension of the mail-in dates.
E- e- either way, if they did this and we would have to come back and revisit it, uh, it might be better to go ahead and pass it because it is unconstitutional. It'd be something that'd have to be looked at, uh, once that is done. So it's, uh, probably doesn't make a lot of difference one way or the other. If we do it now and it's not, then we don't want to deal with it in a couple weeks or whenever.
But does that matter?
It, it matters that we would have to deal with it again in the future if we don't pass it tonight. But if we pass it tonight and it is ruled unconstitutional and has to be revisited, then we can bring it up again.
Yeah, I, I think what Jack says Suzanne is that i- if something changes and, and sticker lawsuit or other lawsuits affect those dates and times, it's gonna affect everything and we're gonna have to change that date anyway.
So, so either way, we're gonna have to bring it up again, probably.
Yeah, if we don't pass it.
Unless nothing happens. Alright, I'll, um... I guess we're seeing that motion and I'll just make a motion to approve items C in the consent agenda.
Which is resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-six. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? You're not, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Placence.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Mayor Boss.
Aye, and that motion passes. Uh, Suzanne, item G.
Item G, I, um, am, I'm looking at these costs and I'm just wondering, this, these itemized costs, are they for separate contractors? Are these all subcontractors or are our city employees doing this? And if they, if it's our city employees, then it seems like the prices are, the numbers are a little high. And, um, I guess those are my questions.
The cost that you see there are the cost to cover the city engineer's expense in doing the items mentioned there to, uh, rebid this project. Uh, this project was bid previously, but he did the plans and specifications and all the other items. This is a standard typical engineering cost and it's within the accepted percentages in terms of total cost of projects. So the, the city engineer is a contract employee of the city. It's Hackett Anderson. No city staff is involved with any of this and that's all their firm's cost for doing the plan, specifications and all of the things that are necessary to get this project ready for the end.
And so where does he get these numbers from? The, the prices?
They're, they're, they're his estimates of his cost for doing the work and they're based on his experience in all these projects.
Do we ever compare those with other, um, engineers?
Uh, we have in the past and we found that Hackett Anderson's prices are more than competitive. Sometimes, uh, much cheaper than others, so, uh, I find these to be very reasonable.
Okay, alright, I'll make a, I, I trust you. I'll make a motion to approve item G in the consent agenda.
Is there a second? I'll second that discussion. You're not, Mr. Nelson, could you please take roll call vote?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Placence.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Mayor Boss.
Aye, that motion passes. On to the planning commission.
Item six A one interim use permit for the keeping of farm animals for two-three-one-three-eight Sunset Road Northeast. Janelle Morse is requesting an IUP for the keeping of two horses, two goats, two ducks and five chickens. An IUP is not required for the keeping of up to ten chickens on residential properties over three acres per chapter ten, article five of the city code. This property is ten point seven one acres in its own rural residential. City code, chapter ten, article five, section ten, one fifty-one requires a minimum of one fenced acre of pasture land plus any indicated fraction thereof must be provided for each animal unit described. This is Morse submitted a site plan showing approximately three acres of fenced, fenced pasture land with an area for an additional one acre if required. The proposed pasture area is illustrated in your packet. In attachment two shows the location of this site and also depicts that the pasture area meets all setback requirements listed in chapter ten, article five, section one fifty-two. There is an existing shelter for the horses that will be utilized on the property. The planning commission held a public hearing on August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty. Property owner Janelle Morse spoke at the public hearing that she does not feel an additional four tenths of an acre of fenced pasture land would be necessary as a specific breed of goats, Nigerian pygmy goats, on average do not get taller than two feet and are significantly smaller than standard goats. The planning commission asked staff if the ordinance specifies alternatives for small breeds, to which staff confirmed it does not. The planning commission recommended approval with the staff conditions. The planning commission voted seven zero in favor of approval of this request. The second public hearing was held on September twenty-second, two thousand twenty due to technical issues that caused the neighboring property owner to be unable to join the meeting. At this public hearing, it was addressed that if the applicant wanted additional farm animals, they would be required to apply for an IUP amendment and obtain city council approval. It was also addressed that no, as no roosters requested, there will be no roosters on the property. The planning commission recommended approval to city council of an IUP for Janelle Morse for the keeping of two horses, two goats, two ducks and five chickens at two-three-one-three-eight Sunset Road Northeast with the conditions listed in your packet. This time, staff recommends approval of the IUP for Miss Morse.
I'll make a motion for approval of resolution twenty twenty fifty-eight granting an interim use permit for the keeping of two horses, two goats, two ducks and five chickens on a property located at two-three-one-three-eight Sunset Road Northeast, pin number thirty-six, thirty-four, twenty-three, forty-one, zero, 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 four.
Second.
Mr. Nelson, second, uh, discussion.
I have a comment if you don't mind. Jack, you said that there was technical issues on the second public hearing of a neighbor who wanted to, uh, join the meeting. Um, have you heard since then from that neighbor? Did they have any issues with this particular IUP?
No, they did not. They had their questions answered and they are fine with it at this time.
Jack, I'm unclear as to what the final result was in terms of the pasture acres. It sounds like recommended four point four acres. I'm not sure what, did pant, did planning pass this assuming it'd be four point four acres?
No, I believe it was four acres and Mrs. Morse is, can join us there and I would ask her to clarify that. Janelle, can you answer that question for Mayor Boss?
Hello, yes, I am not actually a hundred percent, um, certain as well because I kind of was feeling that same way that they didn't clarify the four point four, um, four. So, um, whatever, it stays under the conditions. I, I looked at it and I think it just says approved, you know, approved with conditions. And I think that the city would say that it should be the four point four, so.
That's my thinking was too, based on what I read, so.
Yep, that's, I mean, that's my understanding based on what I read as well, so.
And Jack, is that something that goes into the file? Cause there's, there's nothing, there's nothing in this resolution that documents, uh, the four point four and then the s- the sketch obviously is before they had the discussion of the nuts, so.
So it's the three plus the additional one that could be added, so it'd be that full amount plus more.
Four point four?
Yep.
Okay. Well, it's all, it's our understanding. Uh, uh, any other discussion? You're not, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Placence.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Mayor Boss.
Aye, and that passes. Janelle, thanks for being on tonight.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Uh, on to department reports, our city attorney.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Boss, Mayor and members of council. On September eleventh of this year, the city received a complaint, uh, which made numerous allegations about the environment at city hall and certain city personnel. On September twenty-first, two thousand twenty, I met with Mayor Boss, city administrator Davis and Lightabannick, an attorney at my law firm, Eckberg Lammers, to discuss city's response to the receipt of the complaint. At that time, we determined to recommend that the city investigate the allegations made in the complaint. So at this time, I would propose to the council that attorney Lightabannick with Eckberg Lammers be engaged to investigate the allegations made in the complaint and report back to the city council and the city attorney regarding the validity of the allegations. City attorney will then make recommendations to the council regarding any actions to be taken as a result of the investigation. At this time, I would recommend a motion be made that the city authorize Eckberg Lammers, attorney Lightabannick to investigate the complaint received by the city on September eleventh and to report back to the city council and city attorney with findings upon which the council can base any subsequent action, if any.
Move to approve for the investigation by Eckberg Lammers with, uh, the conditions stated by the city attorney.
Circle.
Mayor Boss, I think you're muted.
Still muted.
I'm sorry, I'm hearing all kinds of other noises. Uh, do you have an estimate on the cost of what that might be?
As, as far as estimates, we don't have a concrete estimate on the cost. Um, that being said, a similar investigation was done, um, by our law firm and that, um, another municipal investigation that cost around four thousand dollars to do. We estimate this will be around that, but a little bit higher based on the fact that i- it's not just one complaint. It's, it's a complaint that makes numerous allegations. So the investigation might take a little bit longer than that. Um, that being said, um, as part of our firm doing the investigation, the city's, uh, you know, contract with the firm would apply with regard to the rate.
Suzanne, you have a question?
Um, I think it should be an entirely different entity that does this investigation simply because our city is paying for this and I think it should be the Department of Labor and Industry or a state auditor or somebody totally not affiliated with our city.
Chris, Chris, what are our options for having an outside investigation?
Um, mo- most likely the city will end up having to retain, um, another private law firm. Um, that'll typically be how these things are done. Um, you know, we can, um, assist with some recommendations or things like that or the city could contact them independently. But that would be the, most of the time when, when these investigations are performed, uh, a private law firm is engaged to, to do the investigations.
And Chris, could I ask you, these costs would probably be a lot higher too, wouldn't they?
I, I believe they would be just based on the fact that, uh, the, the city's contract, uh, applies to our investigation as opposed to, um, as opposed to a, a private firm where the city would have an independent contract with that, the rate would probably be higher. Um, with regard to, um, uh, our own law firm doing it, uh, I, I will tell the council that we would wall off, um, the investigation from your city attorney. Neither Pat Sweeney or myself would have any knowledge of it and it would consist of an independent fact-finding mission, uh, by attorney Bannick who would, uh, not make any recommendations to the council, the city attorney would be, but we would just receive the report. Um, obviously, it's the council's discretion whether or not you want to go with, um, Eckberg Lammers or, uh, another, uh, firm to investigate in.
I have a question. Su- Suzanne, you bring this up. Could you explain your reasoning for the, uh, questions you have or what, what did, what you're interested in?
Sure, I, I just think there could be bias involved because the city is paying this company. That's all. I, I just see so much bias, not here, but in the world, you know? And I just think that I, I would like to be totally free of bi- bias, especially as I read those. She has, um, if she brought a lawsuit in and we had a bias firm investigating, I think that's gonna reflect very negatively on us. That, and those are just my opinions, um, but, but that's what I'm just thinking, sorry.
Well, that's, that's quite alright. I'm just curious, are we investigating, is our lawsuit involved with this particular complaint?
No. So Suzanne, with, with your suggestion, um, would you be okay with retaining a different law firm? We, obviously, the city still has to pay them.
Well, what about the state, like the Department of Labor and Industry or the state auditor or, um, the, I can't think of the name of it, but it's equivalent to the NAACP, um, that does these investigations. And if she retains somebody like that, it's not gonna cost her anything. But if we had somebody non-biased that we could prove are non-biased and some of these, I don't even know if it's the state if they charge, I don't know that.
With, uh, with that, Mayor, members of council, if, if a complaint is, is made by any individual to a, a state agency, the state agency may investigate, uh, the complaint made to it. Uh, I am unaware of state agencies, um, engaging in, in investigations on behalf of, uh, municipalities. Um, I believe that whoever the city would bring in to investigate, uh, on its behalf, uh, would, uh, be charging for the investigation.
That, the Department of Labor, this, to my knowledge, this has not been described as a, a labor breach of any particular... Not a contractual violation or a, um... I, I don't see anything yet that would involve the Department of Labor. My, my experience, that...
And you could be very well right. I could be way off base on this cause I am thinking private business over, um, city. So I may be totally off base.
So you see, I just wanted to comment, I think if Pat and Chris... So Steve, I just wanted to comment. I think if Pam and Chris are gonna remove themselves, I don't think there's, there's any problem at all. It, it's fine to me, so. You know, she's gonna be by herself and, and Chris and Pam will be out of it, so.
Randy, you had a comment?
Um, yes, um, I, 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 I don't dismiss Suzanne's concerns. I, I, I think that it, that, you know, um, anytime that, that, you know, you're kind of um, doing an investigation on, on, you know, some concerns that, that, that have to do with the city, I, I think it's important that we do the right thing. However, um, I will couch that in the fact that I, I think that we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. I think at this point we have received notification of some concerns and that um, you know, to start off with, I would prefer that we stick with Eckers and Lammers um, to do the initial investigation. Um, I think if, if there's, there's any further um, action that is taken uh, by other parties, um, then at that point, um, it, it proved that, that we would have to turn over our investigation to someone else. But I think at this point, um, we're kind of jumping the gun and, and saying, well, we're just gonna go find somebody that we, you know, um, I, I don't want to stay off the street, but somebody, find someone else that, that is recommended to us in order to run this investigation at this point, so, thanks.
It, it, may I, uh, in my experience with the National Department of Labor, I've answered a number of hard labor issues, national, and it, this, this isn't a contractual matter, it's not a labor matter at all. This is a complaint within, it hasn't been a fight appeal to the EEO. This is an internal complaint, there's no, there's no uh, reasonable reason to contact or call or anybody on what he's doing. That make sense?
Yeah, I think, I think the fact that a separate attorney within, like, was doing it and the, the, and the accusations that were made in the letter, there was nothing that involved our city attorney's office at all, so I, I don't think there's any uh, you know, there, so, um, I guess my concern, you know, I understand, I agree with Suzanne that use a firm that you're contracted with may, may alleviate some concern or bias, but I don't think you have any indication that there could be bias concern here, right? Um, Suzanne?
Okay, yeah, so it's sounding like I was pretty far off base. Um, some of you guys are hard to understand, you're breaking up, so I'm hoping I'm coming across clear. Um, so I'm just wondering what happens if there is fault found in the investigation by our city attorneys or the people they contract?
Um, at, uh, mayor and council members, uh, at that time, um, the city attorney, Pat Sweeney and myself would make uh, recommendations to the council to address that. The recommendations would be made by us to the council and uh, Hispanic who's doing the investigation would not be involved in that whatsoever. So the, you would get recommendations from us about any actions that need to be taken.
Thanks.
Tom?
If, one more point on this, if this was a matter of discrimination, then you would go outside for some such thing. And if it was, it couldn't be the city to go outside and have, it would be the labor, if she's represented by an agreement, to make that recommendation. Or for her to take some uh, results tied like uh, the EEOs. But that, that's what we're dealing with here.
Yeah. So any other discussion? Hey, hearing, uh, to the motion, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Running.
Aye.
Councilmember Plessance.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and that motion passes. Um, Chris, how soon do you think that investigation start and you have any idea about length of time?
Uh, I, I can't uh, uh, tell uh, the council how, how long the investigation will take. It depends on where it goes, but as far as the start time, it'll start um, promptly. So promptly after this meeting.
All right. Okay, on to the city administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adam, seven G one, city commission vacation. The city's road commission is a citizen board is briefed on projects or items related to local streets and public right of way improvements and comments on these to city council. There have been recent discussions that the needs addressed by the roads commission have evolved beyond the intended reason for the establishment of this board. The original role of the roads commission was to review subdivision street plans to ensure they met city standards. As developments in the city have shifted from traditional rural subdivision plans to planned unit developments, commercial projects, projects that require utility service and larger scale projects that require more engineering and legal oversight, the commission at times has been bypassed as a step in the review and approval process due to the time sensitivity required for these types of developments. Review process has gradually transitioned to staff and consultants over the years due to the complexity of many of the issues associated with these types of projects. Roads commission has experienced recent difficulties in attracting applicants for vacancies on the board. There is a current position that's been vacant since November twenty nineteen and one of the seats on the commission is still on interim post. There will be two commissions expire January twenty twenty first and one of the applicants has not applied for reappointment, has moved and has resigned. Currently, the primary function of roads commission has been to review staff presentations relating to capital improvements plans, classified resurfacing and JPA, street maintenance projects. Other requests such as street light installation, no parking proposals and paving petitions have been heard. The final approval of any roads or public right of way improvements still rests with the city council. East Bethel is one of only a few cities that has a roads commission. None of the northern Anoka County cities has a separate commissions deal exclusively with this matter. Most of these municipalities address transportation and local roads concerns at a committee level or by their city engineer or through the planning, their planning commissions. This approach eliminates an additional step in the plan review and permitting process. Due to the issues outlined above, city council began this discussion regarding vacating the roads commission at the August third, twenty twenty work meeting. This discussion was carried over to the September second work meeting and direction was given to staff to present this as an action item for the September twenty eighth, twenty twenty city council meeting. The direct costs for the operation of the roads commission are thirty eight, three thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and include up to sixteen hundred and eighty dollars of board compensation, up to one thousand four hundred and forty dollars in recording secretary cost, up to one hundred and thirty-five dollars in postage cost, a hundred and sixty-eight dollars in printing cost and four hundred dollars in transportation expense. These costs are budgeted in the street maintenance category of the city's general fund. In addition, they approximately seventy hours of the public works managers and forty hours of the administrative assistance time are required for preparation materials and conduction of the meetings. Staff is requested to consider two motions tonight. Motion number one is city council is requested to consider the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero seven which repeals section two dash one eighty-three and two dash one eighty-four within chapter two, article four, division five of the East Bethel city code.
Is there motion? I'll make a motion that to uh, approve ordinance twenty twenty dash zero seven relating sections two dash one eight three and two dash one eight four within chapter two, article four, division five of the East Bethel code. Is there a second?
Circle.
Uh, ten seconds, uh, discussion. Suzanne?
Um, I don't have a problem with the overall thing, but there's some wording in these things that um, confused me a little bit. Uh, first, on page eighty-four, it's talking about it being three years where I think um, they shouldn't, these committees people should not exceed two years, especially since council members um, most likely will have like two years left. Um, that, it says a chairperson must complete one year before they can become a chair, but if it's a new committee, how is that going to even be possible? Um, because if it's a whole new board, nobody's been a chair. On page eighty-seven, it recommends two council persons, but on page eighty-four, it says a city council member, so I'm wondering why two and is it two or is it one? And that's all I, all the comments I have on it.
Suzanne, I believe what you're referring to are the requirements for commissions. Uh, this proposal repeals the roads commission and then the second motion to be considered tonight is a roads committee which does not follow and fall under the rules of the commissions and it would have a separate composition and it also complies and matches those with the creation and those are contained in the finance committee.
I, that's kind of what I thought and I went back and looked and it just said um, commissions and committees on the heading, so that's why I asked about the, one of them.
Yeah, Jack, the title to article four states boards, comma, committees and commissions, so it suggests, I think this is where Suzanne's come from, it's suggesting that this new committee is gonna fall under these requirements.
Uh, no, they don't. When, if you go down through there, you read the requirements for the planning commission, the parks commission and the roads commission and they are specific as to their composition. The composition of a committee can be made up of whom the council directs. Uh, the roads commission or the finance committee appointed two council persons as members. Uh, generally, the pattern for these roads committees is to have two council persons, the city engineer, the public works manager and or the city administrator on them. So the composition of the committee can be what you choose.
I, I agree, but it looks like our current ordinance, it, it, it's, it treats commissions and boards and committees all the same by the title. Um, does that need to be cleaned up?
It probably does. Committee should probably be exempt from that and maybe boards too, because primarily this just deals with commissions. The only other two outstanding bodies that we have are authorities and they're governed by their own bylaws which are set up by state statute, which is the HRA and the EDA.
Uh, on uh, on page eighty-four of the packet, under, it says section two dash seventy-five, city employees, city employees may not serve on committees or commissions. So if we're setting up a new road committee and, and then it mean, I assume it also applied to our finance committee, you know, because yourself and, and, and our financial director on there, they're neither, you know, they're employees of the city and it also says you gotta be a resident of the city. So I, to me, that needs to be cleaned up.
I agree, I agree.
Okay, so again, it's like you said, this is more a discussion for the next, next resolution than this one, but um, is there any uh, further discussion on this motion? Hey, hearing now, uh, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call both, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Running.
Aye.
Councilmember Plessance.
Aye.
Urkel.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and this motion passes. Janelle, on to the next uh, order.
Motion, motion number two, city council is requested to consider the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero eight which means chapter two, article four, division five of the East Bethel city code by adding sections two dash one eighty-five and two dash one eighty-six to create a roads committee.
I think based on the discussion we just had and some of the wording, um, I think it's probably an order to table this, so this can get cleaned up. I'll, I'll move it, we table uh, table the consideration of ordinance, is there a, is there a second?
Second.
Um, second, uh, roll call both, please.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Running.
Aye.
Councilmember Plessance.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, that motion passes. Item two.
CARES Business Relief Grant Program Amendment. The East Bethel city council approved an emergency small business grant relief program at the September fourteenth, twenty twenty council meeting. This program will utilize CARES Act funds to provide assistance to businesses that suffer disruptions due to the peacetime emergency declarations and executive orders that address the COVID nineteen panic, pandemic. Assistance through this program may include costs for current payroll obligations, lease or mortgage payments, utilities, accounts payable and other critical business expenses that can't be paid as a direct result of the current health emergency. This program is subject to applicable state and local peacetime emergency executive orders. The motion to approve the program included the fund amount for allocation, types of businesses eligible to apply for the grant and the total amount appropriated for each business category, but did not include the consideration of an amendment to increase the number of full-time employees that defined eligibility for the grants. The number of full-time employees that was approved for the eligibility guidelines was fifty. Prior to the program approval, there was sentiment to increase the maximum number beyond the fifty full-time employees as passed by city council on September fourteenth, twenty twenty. As a result, council may want to consider amending the program eligibility requirement and increase the employment number required to qualify for the grant funds. In addition to the eligibility criteria relating to employment caps, staff received a request for additional amendment to the nonprofit program guidelines to allow five oh one C seven corporations as qualifiers to the program. Five oh one C sevens are nonprofits that operate social businesses. Beaverbrook Sportsman Club could qualify under this tax code section for the program. Attached to red line copies that provide changes to allow up to a hundred and fifty employees is the cap for the business grant relief program. And as a recommendation, staff recommends city council considering expanding the employment limits for the business grant relief program from fifty to up to one hundred and fifty full-time employees and include the five oh one C seven corporations as an eligible applicant category with a nonprofit business relief grant program.
Uh, I got, I got a question. Probably talked this before, but why March first? Um, special question for businesses.
Steve, you broke up, I didn't understand your question.
Yeah, we need to make sure it's muted. And we have, there's two other lines on the paper, I'm not sure why, but uh, my question is why is, why is March first selected as the date of when the business had to be in uh, in operation?
It, it could be set at any date. Some have it actually set farther back than that uh, to prove that they, but just, it's set just to show that they were in business prior to the issuance of any type of executive orders that would cause them to suffer losses due to the COVID nineteen pan- pandemic.
Okay, I, I, I don't know if, I, I don't know if it, this is a case with any businesses within our town, but I do know of one business in a, in a nearby town, a restaurant um, who, that was literally set to open, you know, April first and because of everything, they've, they've had the uh, at March versus earlier than that, they've had to stay shut down. They eventually opened, but they, they, like every other business, especially restaurants, had to take, you know, had a lot of costs associated with it. So a- as long as it's not tied to, you know, the CARES Act itself in terms of that date, if we could move that date back, um, I, I, I don't know why we. um, I, I, I don't know why we wouldn't consider, make this more, you know, inclusive.
Uh, moving it back would make it more exclusive, I believe. Are you talking about moving it forward or moving it?
No, if we move that, that. What am I saying? I think I'm being circular on this.
Yeah, yeah, I, if, if we move back.
Yeah, so, I mean, ma- make it May first or something like that, so, right?
Uh, yeah, and, and again, I don't, I don't know of any businesses in our city that would apply, be applicable to that, but we could, we could do that. I, I think the intent was just to make sure that the business was in operation prior to the effects of the COVID nineteen pandemic and the executive orders that did issue businesses shut down and the other businesses experiences lost due to slowdown of the economy.
I, you know, ma- ma- maybe the, maybe it's not the date so much as is the definition of operation. You know, you know, I don't see as the doors having to be open to the public because these businesses take months to get ready to open, so. But if we don't think it's, we don't think it affects any of our businesses, then perhaps we don't need to change it, so.
We, we haven't had any responses from any local businesses that expressed any concern about this date. In fact, our date is the latest one that I've seen. Some of them are up to a year prior to the COVID nineteen, some of them are up to six months, so. Our, ours is the latest one that I've seen on.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion, Suzanne?
I just have a question, are all of these um specifications, are they East Bethel specifications or state? And I'm talking about like for the rental and for, because um, and the gambling. Were those, are those the state or county rules or are those added by East Bethel?
What we did, we, we mirrored the county's program because local businesses are applying for the county grants too, so this is just going to simplify their own grant applications when they come to us. It'll be the same set of guidelines for each program.
Uh, because I was just thinking that all the rental, people who have rental properties, um, there, a lot of people aren't required to pay rent right now and um they're, they're suffering. And I don't know why we wouldn't allow them to apply for COVID relief, the owners of the rental properties.
Well, i- if it was, the only real rental apartment unit type complex we have is East Bethel Village Apartments, and they've expressed no interest there for occupancy. Uh, if we're talking about individual people that rent their own houses out, this isn't designed for that. And I, I don't even know, I'd have to check to see if it was even program eligible. I doubt that it is, but I would have to check that.
Yeah, maybe, maybe you could do that because um, you know, I know a lot of people who buy properties and, you know, they just lease them out and uh, you know, um, well, the words aren't coming to me, the managers and owners of multiple properties that just buy them and rent them out. And I know there's several down around Coon Lake, and I don't know if they're East Bethel or Ham Lake residents. It might be Ham Lake, I don't even know where they live, but um, I'd just like to know for sure.
Yeah. A- a- and again, from my experience with the program to date, I don't think it's designed to address those types of issues. Uh, generally, the rental properties are considered to be not as affected as other types of businesses are, uh, especially those that were affected by the total shutdown and the funds are probably geared more toward helping those type of business recover.
Yeah, I, I've seen call, when I looked at the detail of the plan, there was something about rental, residential rental properties not being allowed.
Yeah.
But perhaps, you know, let's get these changes made, get this implemented and we can look into it and see if that can be expanded, so.
Well, I would just have a question about that, I mean, um, granted, I don't, I don't want to hold this up, but if you were to consider um apartments or leasing or, or, or management of, of, of rental property, I'm wondering how you would verify what, what you're talking about or, or how to, how to address the loss that someone has um for that rental property. I mean, would you have to get, you know, an affidavit from, from the person who's living in that, you know, apartment slash leasing space that they, you know, weren't able to afford what they were talking about? I mean, you know, there was the moratorium that, that you couldn't kick anybody out of their, their place during this time. So I'm just kind of curious, I mean, even if we were to do that, and again, and I'm, I'm not saying that we shouldn't or couldn't, I'm just curious how we would even approach that type of problem. Um, thanks, that's all I have.
Yeah, question for you. The first eligibility rule is that if they're a business recognized by the city, I, I think, where they would have an right to complete their sunset spending, identifying them as a rental property and the operator of rental properties, would that be?
The, yeah, the, we, we do have, the only way we could make, we could make that identification from the people who've signed up that uh actually have registered their properties with their rental ordinance. Uh, that just identifies them as renters. Whether that actually qualifies as a business is a real question under, under this whole program, which needs to be checked out. Uh, and again, it's my understanding at this point that these, these properties, nobody has included them in their plans. So uh, that's something we'd have to investigate further, but our method of identification, if they were, is if they've signed up and they're registered under the rental ordinance. If I understand your question correct, Tom.
I, I think so, that uh, there, there are eligibility rules for us to be able to consider them. And whether they would meet those eligibility rules, I guess is my, my question.
Yeah.
It's not as though we're unsympathetic with, with things, but we, we can't try to help somebody that we won't be allowed to help anyhow.
And one, one of the other requirements that might be hard to meet is you're required to have employees, at least one. And if you're an, if you're a, a, a person that owns some rental properties, I, I don't know if it'd be very difficult for some of those people to meet that qualification.
That's a good point. Well, perhaps staff can look into it a little bit and just uh get back to council on it and see if it's an option. We can make that note to the program for need. Uh, we've been talking this too long, I don't believe we made a motion on this yet.
I will go ahead and make the motion uh for expanding the employment limits of, for the business grant relief program from fifty up to one hundred and fifty full-time employees and include five oh one C seven corporations as an eligible applicant category for the nonprofit business relief grant program.
Second. Motion made, second, discussion.
Jack, I'm just kind of cur- curious, how many applications you've got back uh so far? This is kind of off it a little bit.
We haven't received any yet, the deadline is October the ninth. We know that there are seven that are doing applications at this point. And there are others that have received that. I went to the Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting last week and they're getting this information out to their seventy-five members. We have it advertised on all of our media sources. Uh, the experience with the county has been the first round, they didn't get nearly the applications they thought they would get. Uh, we may be in the same boat too. Uh, and it's fortunate, I don't think there was many businesses here that were impacted as there were in other places, especially those that have a lot of bars and restaurants. Uh, the ones that were major impact in our city were those businesses plus the East Bethel Theater. But we do know that there are several applications out, we do know that there are seven that are working on them currently and uh that's, that's my report on the update on that, Mr. Harrington.
Yeah. Any other discussion? None, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Placence.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Mayor Boss.
Aye. And that motion passes.
Item seven G three, October work meeting and call for a special meeting to appoint election judges for the twenty twenty general election. Our monthly work meeting is scheduled for October fifth, twenty twenty at seven P M. Staff has no items scheduled and requests that council add any items they feel necessary for an agenda. If there are no subjects for discussion, we would need to cancel the meeting. In addition to taking action for the work meeting, staff request that council call a special meeting for October fifth, two thousand twenty to appoint the election judges for the twenty twenty general election. Minnesota Statute two oh four B point twenty-one subdivision two requires that the city council appoint election judges for each election. The appointment for the twenty twenty general election must be completed by Wednesday, October seventh. We are still reconciling precinct assignments with party balance requirements and will have those completed by October the second. Request that special meeting be scheduled for seven P M on October fifth, twenty twenty and that the work meeting set to follow upon adjournment of special meeting, should it be established, have an established agenda. Staff has two motions for the recommendations. Motion one, staff recommends that city council set the items for the October work meeting agenda. And if there are no items to schedule, consider cancellation of the meeting.
Those council have items that um we need to discuss in their work meeting next week? Suzanne?
I would like to um consider going back to meeting in the chambers. I don't know what everybody else thinks about it, but I know all the other cities around us are meeting and I, I think we should maybe start doing that. I think it's easier to understand people. I'm having a really hard time understanding some, uh, some of the council members.
You want to discuss that now or you want to discuss it at the work?
Either or.
Um, are there any other items for the work being? I guess I'm in the opinion, we'll do it at a work being, or are we going to be there for the special meeting? And I don't know how long a discussion would be. My, my only concern is, I guess it's not concern, we're going to have to broadcast this two separate meetings though, right, Jack?
Uh, no, we don't have to do this, since it's a special meeting, we can just adjourn that meeting, go directly to the work meeting. There's no. Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And we, we would set the work meeting time upon the completion of the special meeting, which the special meeting should take no more than five minutes.
Agreed. Suzanne, do you want to make that form a motion then?
Sure, I'll make a motion um to include the topic of returning city council meetings into the chambers at the next work meeting, first work meeting in October. Better if I made it down.
Is there a second to the motion? I'll ask again, is there a second to the motion? If not, that motion fails. So we'll need to, well, mo- first motion fails, so now we need a motion to call a special meeting for seven P M on October fifth to approve appointing election judges for twenty twenty general election. Is there a motion there?
We'll move.
Tom makes motion?
Second.
Ten seconds, discussion.
Um, why do we need a special meeting for this? Why can't it wait till the first meeting in October then?
Because these judges have to be appointed by October the seventh. And we're still rounding up and trying, we're having problems with the judges. We either have too many of one party or too, too many, too few of the other party. And these have to be balanced for each precinct, so we're getting all that finalized and it'll be by this Friday before that happens.
Yeah. Is there any, any other discussion? Add into the motion, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Placence.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Mayor Boss.
Aye. That motion passes. Under our staff report.
Uh, due to an employee resignation, the building department has downed one employee. And staff has reviewed several options to address this problem and we think the best case scenario is to hire a temp employee for the building department and then request staff to authorize the advertisement of the administrative assistant position uh to be put in the paper and request applications for that position.
So you need a motion?
I would like, I would like a motion for that if you so approve.
A motion from council member?
Move to accommodate the city and city staff with the employment opportunities and needs described by the city amendment.
Second.
Uh, motion made, second, discussion. Chris, was that motion clear enough on direction?
If the, if the motion is to approve a temporary position and to authorize the advertisement of the administrative assistant position, is that the motion, Councilmember Ronnie?
Yeah, that's the de-encrypted motion.
Okay.
With that clarification, Mayor Boss.
All right. We know the intent, it's hard to make a pass motion on intent, so. Um, any other discussion?
Jack, when, when, uh, when would these advertisements go out for the full-time job?
Uh, we would present the job description to the council at the next city council meeting and then we would go with the advertising from that point.
Thank you.
A- any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Placence.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Mayor Boss.
Aye. That motion passes.
And I have only one other thing, is, is I sent an email out today, but the city's comp plan has been officially deemed complete by the Met Council Planning Staff and it will go to review by their required committees. And it should be submitted to the East Bethel City Council for formal adoption on December the fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Yeah. Jack, has, has, has that gone out to other cities? Was that part of the review process already?
Uh, yes, it has been, we've, we've already solicited all their, their sixty day comments from our surrounding border municipalities.
Okay, so, so it truly is just East Bethel passing it though?
That's correct, and it has to go through th- three review committees at the Met Council level. Generally, once it gets through the staff level review though, it's like the, the, the issue that we presented there a couple of years ago, it's generally just approved because they don't go against any of their staff recommendations.
Okay.
Jack, do you have any knowledge whether or not any other cities reviewed all the plan and made comments?
Uh, we sent it out to all of our bordering municipalities, they all reviewed it, but they, none of them had any additional comments regarding their plan.
I, I, I was kind of curious if anyone would make the effort to go through all that stuff with all the cities.
Uh. I, I, I don't know how much they do, but uh they had no comments, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, anything else, Jack?
That's it.
Your council report, Suzanne?
I don't really have anything, but I do have a question for Jack. Do you know if there's going to be a park meeting this month in October?
Yes, there will be, and they will be getting the packet out and it'll be a fairly lengthy one. There's certain lines, but there will be the park meeting.
Will that be the first Wednesday or the second Wednesday?
Second Wednesday in October.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Suzanne? Randy. You're on mute, Randy.
Thank you, um, uh, we did have, uh, on the twenty-first, um, the E D A. meeting, um, and we basically went over the CARES Act, um, and also the business, uh, update for the city. Um, I'd also like to point out that, um, on the next regular council meeting on October twelfth, if residents wishing to speak at the, uh, public forum, uh, to please, um, contact the city administrator by four P M. on the Thursday preceding that date, um, and then the other thing is, on, in October, um, there is the Night to Unite, uh, which is, um, October sixth. I don't know how many, Ja- Jack, do you know how many, how many people are actually going to be having a party on that night? You're on mute, Jack.
There are four parties scheduled for that night, and, uh, we'll post them on the website, uh, so people can check those out.
All right, very good, um, and that completes my report, thank you.
Tim?
Uh, we had both watersheds, the upper rung, we, uh, our technical advisory committee gave some recommendations on wetland standards. We also gave some recommendations on landlocked basin standards, and we also talked about the one watershed, one plan update. Sunrise, we, uh, we got, uh, some information, like cart management project update. Uh, Martin and Coon Lake Stormwater retrofit project updates. And then we also got an update on the, uh, I hope I don't butcher this name, Shendrich, Coon Lake Lakeshore Restoration Project, I guess it's done and it really looks nice. And then finally, uh, last Monday, uh, I was along with the fire department, we toured the East Bethel senior living building, very nice building. That's all I've got.
Tom. You're on mute.
I, I don't have anything.
Okay, good. Uh, and, uh, I agree with Tim, I, I, I had the opportunity to tour the Cedar Creek Senior Living, uh, facility, um, which is our newest, uh, and our first senior living facility in the city, uh, scheduled to start taking residence in November. Um, the, uh, uh, if you've been by the building, uh, the inside is as nice or better than, uh, the outside, it's, it's a very, very, um, impressive building inside in terms of quality and, and the amenities, and, um, and so if there's any residents that are, uh, considering that kind of a move, they do have, uh, independent living there as well. Um, or if you have a loved one, or if you think even a year from now, you know, you may want to look at that, uh, uh, they are providing, uh, tours as needed, so you can contact Cedar Creek Senior Living directly. Um, uh, sounds like they are, they're not getting filled up, but they're getting reservations, and, uh, um, again, it's a, it's a nice addition to our community, so. With that, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Plazans.
Aye.
Councilmember Erkle.
Aye.
Mayor Boss.
Aye, uh, that motion passes, and our meeting's adjourned, uh, thank you everyone, have a good night.